He Einstein saw something, understood something, believed something, I mean somewhere along the lines, he got some confidence. And uh from there on, you, the mind goes into a different gear, if that's the right word. Uh it your mental powers increase. Just believing, all believing equals receiving. Believing is the greatest law in the Word of God, it's the greatest law in the whole world. Confidence, trust and faith, you know what I'm getting to believing. Cause then you believe you can, and you can, you believe you will, and you will. That's, and then it becomes easy. You believe and start consistently believing, then it becomes easy. It starts to be something simple to do, not hard. Yes, there are techniques, but how did those techniques get developed? Someone believed and someone said, I want to find a faster way, a better way, okay, I'm doing this, I'm getting it, but there's a better way. They believe that, they work it, they work it, and they find a better way for them, and then they share it with others. And it doesn't work for the others, because if the others don't believe, you can know every technique on the planet. There's a bunch of different techniques on how to, for example, memorize something. But until someone believes they can, and they are concerned enough to do it, it doesn't matter what technique they use, it's not gonna work. Really work. You know, educate, boy, that's why the rudimentary principles, we work so much with just anyway. The release from one's prisons depends upon two things. Clarity and concern. So when we're working with people, we could be dealing, and they're still in prison on a situation, we can be dealing with one of two of those or both of them. Maybe they are concerned, but they're not clear. What does that produce, if you're concerned and not clear?
No picture.
No pictures, so what do you have?
No person.
Okay. No release. What are some of the symptoms? A person's gonna be confused, perhaps, right? Frustrated.
Angry or respectful.
A lot of, yeah, angry. Why? They don't have a picture. They've got energy, because they've got concern, but the concern is all over the place. They're distracted, that's another thing. Distracted. You know, we get distracted too. Sometimes we have concerns, so there's the flip side of it, let's look at it that way. You are concerned, but you get distracted. Happens to all of us. We're concerned, but we get distracted. Something comes up that distracts us. Again, that was a great movie, In Lie of Death, there were a lot of things that could have kept that woman from getting done what she wanted to get done. Aaron Brockovich. And I'm sure from time to time, she was distracted, but she kept coming back to what it was that she wanted to get accomplished, which really was, yes, to take care of her family and, and all that, and her kids. But that wasn't the biggest deal for Aaron Brockovich. Even as a mother, that was not her biggest deal, her biggest concern. Her big concern, from the movie's exemplification, was to be validated as a human being. That she was really worth something, that she was valuable to somebody. That somebody needed her. You know, yeah, she knew her kids needed her, she knew her kids wanted her, but she wanted, and she wanted someone of importance to want her, and to feel like she was, and to validate her as a person, as a valuable human being. We have that with God, you know, it's amazing the things people do to have that validation with people. Well, we automatically have that with God. The greatest in the universe says, yep, you're valid. You're great, you're cool, you're wonderful. You know, we'd be blessed if the President of the United States called and said, Chuck, I've heard all about you, and I think you're one of the greatest people on the planet. Anytime you want to come to the White House, you just let me know. Here's my private phone number. You can call me anytime. But God Almighty says that, and we go, boy, you know, just working with the mind, huh? Every, every time in, in manifestation, see, God Almighty tells us how great we are, how wonderful we are, how proud He is, what a privilege He counts it. It's really something. And what if we didn't have mental ability? What if we really didn't have the mental ability? Somewhere along the lines, a part of our brain got shot out, or something. What would we still have? God in Christ in us. God being the life of our lives, the strength of our strength, God being our sufficiency. I learned years ago in school, growing up in school. And I was a Christian from a very young age. And so, somewhere along the lines, I developed the confidence that I thought I was pretty smart. Part of it was, my dad bought me some World Book Encyclopedias when I was very young. And I started looking at the pictures and started reading, I don't remember, someone taught me, I didn't do it by osmosis. My mother must have sat and read with me, taught me to read, or whatever. I got these, other people, kids are getting toys, I got encyclopedias. I got toys later too, but I got encyclopedias, World Book Encyclopedias, somebody sold somebody on spending five hundred bucks, or a thousand, or whatever. Good investment, by the way, so their kid could not be a dummy or something, I don't know. So I, I thought I got some confidence along the way, I think I was kinda smart. Somewhere along the lines. I remember this vividly now. Realizing that the years that I was really faithful to God, as I knew, understood, and, and, you know, faithful to the church and this kind of thing, I always went, but there, there were years when I was more into it than others. The years I was into it, my grades were always higher than the years I was not. I still got good grades, but they were excellent grades, the years that I, to what I understood, kept God first. You know, understood at that time, had, was more concerned with God. Really something. So with or without mental capacity, with God, we have all the capacity we could ever need. If we have all this greatness in soul life, boy, oh boy, what do we have in spirit life? Let's take it back a notch. Einstein learned and developed and saw all this great stuff in the physical universe. Yet one soul is worth all the wealth of the world. How vast is soul life? Which is what we're dealing with in the renewed mind category, when you deal with working with the mind, renewing the mind. It's much more vast than the physical universe, if the worth of one soul is worth all the wealth of the world. What would it profit a man to gain the whole world and lose his own soul? Nothing. Look at the work of a soul. How vast is the understanding and the developing and the ability in the mind, which is just part of soul life. Then at the next higher level, we have spirit life, which we can't even understand, except for the Word, and what God gives us, impressions and truths to us about the spiritual world and makes them logical. We don't understand squat. Einstein couldn't even go there. And they study soul life so much now, and since Freud and others, but because they can't distinguish between soul life and spirit life, they're trying to study many times devil spirit operation, can't do it. Cause that takes a different category. They can, all they can do is look at symptoms. And say, well, this guy that has, is bipolar, these are the symptoms. They can't see who's swinging around those poles. The two Cs of release. This, of course, is totally the responsibility of the person. We can paint a picture as clearly as possible of someone's deliverance. You know, we can do that many times by teaching the Word, sharing the Word. We can show them, hey, here's a picture, here's a clear picture of what you can have. Now they still have to buy into that picture, don't they? Absolutely. They have to want that picture for themselves. And then concern, we can share that this should be a concern for you, for example, with someone. We can really share it, I mean, we can, right? We can share that with someone that, look, is it a good night to wake up every morning and find yourself in some, in a different bed, in a different room, in, in the street, here, there and yonder? We can share that this should be a concern. We can even keep bringing things up. But until the person says, hey, I've had it with this, I'm gonna do something about this, they don't get out of prison. We know this, I've shared my life, I've heard your, things you've shared about that. When you finally get to the point, you know, Lee, of course, has shared with me, he shared with me about that story when he was down to twenty bucks. And that point for him was the turning point, was the bottom. Cause from there, he was going up, not down. That was the decision point, the point of decision, the point of no return. There's a magazine article, Dr. Rowell did, it behoove you to read it. The point of no return, I don't remember which way in the magazine, it's in the box, everyone knows where they are, or are on the shelves. It's called, the article is called, "The Point of No Return", when we have reached the point of no return. Now, we've reached that point in terms of our commitment to God, that we are not turning back. And there are other little points along the way where we make up our minds to, to improve from there, and not to go back down. Get clear on what is wanted. And then become concerned about receiving it. Get God's Word of Deliverance. These are get things here, huh? Get this, get that. Get God's Word of Deliverance and Release into your mind and into your heart. Into your heart. Well, how do we get things into our heart? For one, you get it into your mind, and you repeat it, you repeat it, you repeat it, you repeat it, and then you work it, work it, work it, until cha-ching, it drops into your heart. Uh, was described greatly by Roseanne Holdren, Roseanne Kipp-Holdren, I think that's right. Who talked about when you go on the bus, and you put in change. And you have to keep putting in change until, until it falls through. And then it falls through and says, okay, you know, does whatever it does, okay, that's, you've met the fare. Same thing about if you're at a toll booth. You gotta keep putting in change until you put in enough for the toll, for the gate to open up. Same kind of thing, then it's in your heart. You put enough thoughts on this subject into your mind, until you've put enough to flick that lever, until it registers in your heart. The heart may not know the difference between something imagined, between truth or, uh, what's the something that's real and something that's not. But the heart does distinguish when it's real to you. It does know that point, when it's real to you, when you finally believe it. And to know in our conscious minds, that it's as simple as continuing to repeat something, to work it, to drive it into your mind, and that will get in your heart. This is why we never have an excuse. Because we truly do have freedom of will. We have the freedom to determine absolutely the direction we will go. We have the freedom to determine what we will have in our lives, or not have, within the realm of what the Word says is available. We have that, that's freedom of will. It is the absolute freedom to determine the direction we will go. What we will be, what we will have, what we will see, what we will understand, and within the realm of what's available. Otherwise, God would have to keep all men of God alive. We mourned the death of Dr. Rowell. But what Dr. Rowell took to the grave with him, God still knows. Well, if God knows it, and you and I are willing to believe, then we can know it. Does that make sense?
Sure.
You bet it's available. It's available as long as you live. Now, some of these things that Dr. Rowell understood, took tremendous work to get there. But if there's any passage of Scripture that we wanted to know, and we're willing to work, and believe, and have the confidence that we can work the Word, see? We would have to have that confidence. Dr. shared, not everyone has a research mind, true. You want one? You can get it. I know we're made differently in the sense that we have different likes and dislikes, we grew up differently, we this, that and the other. We may have certain tendencies, we do. Certain tendencies that are genetic, et cetera, et cetera. And that's, some of those tendencies are why we won't do what Dr. Rowell did, because we don't have that same desire, goal, wish, want, leaning, tendency, inclination, whatever words you want to use, in, inbred or inborn quality, or innate quality, somewhere in our soul life, but we could, we could understand the theory of relativity if we wanted to. It might take a year, two years, three years, that was another thing about Einstein, they said. He didn't care how long it took. If he was working on, uh, let's see, how did he put it? Time was never a problem for Einstein. Dr. Rowell put it another way. Time is not important, the keys are important. And that's the way I put it now. Time is not important, the keys are important. In other words, Einstein didn't care whether they figured it out, he cared as a human, but he, once he saw it and understood it, whether anyone else got it, how long it took them to get it was not important. How long it would even take him to prove it was no longer important, once he saw that that's the way it works. I understand that. Application becomes just secondary to knowing that it's the Word. You see it? Dr. Rowell put it another way. If it never comes to pass, it's still God's Word, it's still the Word, it's still God's Word. If it never comes to pass, it's still God's, once you see the Word and it fits, if you never experience it in your life, it's still God's Word. And that really is the source of the joy. Joy and rejoicing, thy words were found, and I did eat them. And the Word was unto me, the joy and rejoicing, just the Word, if I never get to see it. But we understand clarity and concern. If nobody ever gets clear and concerned enough to get released from their prison, it's still the way it works. Understand. If no one ever applies the camera analogy, to take a picture and have it in their life, it's still the way the Word works. If someone never puts enough of the Word into their mind and heart, if they never eat it enough, drink it enough, sleep it enough, walk with it enough, every time they take a step, if they don't do that long enough to receive, that is still what the Word teaches. If ye continue in my word, then are ye my disciples indeed, and ye shall know by experience the truth. If they never abide long enough, that is still how to experience the truth. Right? Man, that's the, that's another thing that enables us as leaders to remain free and peaceful and positive. Boy, we love people, we just, we get so concerned for them, but we can't violate our principles from the Word. We can't supersede them, we can't overcome them. Here in the book, see, it's right here. Someone wants to be released? Here it is. Get God's Word of Deliverance and Release. What is the, what brings the release and the deliverance? God's Word. We learn in the first page of this chapter, "These three short verses contain the key to release: We must believe the Word of God, which is truth; and then we must know the Son, who is the way, the truth, and the life. In following God's Word and in knowing His Son, we will not only be free, but we shall be free how? Indeed, so, we get God's Word of Deliverance, and if we don't do that, we are not concerned enough. Or we're not clear, we're not clear on the truth, that we gotta have God's Word of Deliverance and Release. Or what do you need to be released from? Whatever it is, get God's Word of Deliverance and Release as specific to that category as possible, this is how it works. It'll work this way for saint or sinner alike. It'll work this way for someone who just took the class yesterday, or who took the class twenty years ago. It'll work this way for someone who hasn't taken the class yet, just comes to a fellowship. It'll work this way for anyone willing to work it. Get God's Word of Deliverance and Release into your mind and into your heart. Eat it. So when you're eating, again, this is a figure of speech, eat it, drink it, sleep it, it means all day long, throughout the day. It's put another way in the Word. And in His Word, doth He meditate what? Day and night, and that means throughout the day, in Psalms 1, which, I mean, you guys ought to memorize every morning before going to school. Have you quoted? Like my mom made me quote it. "Blessed is the man, verse 1, that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful; but his delight is in the law of the Lord." Hey, you got some desire stuff going on there, don't you? Talk about the education of desire, his delight is in the law of the Lord. There are a lot of things we can delight in. Einstein delighted in his research, to the degree that nothing else was that important. He liked sailing, and basically the only other thing he saw was a pipe all the time. Our delight is in the law of the Lord, and therefore we keep our lives simple, as simple as possible. Or as Dr. Rowell put it, so you believe, since you're a super conqueror, believe to have fewer needs, you know, conquer those needs, how did they put it exactly? Do you remember? We gotta listen to that tape again, or CD again, but
You get so much stuff, so you have to.
Yeah, it's not quite how he put it. So what you do is, you have fewer needs, something, well, something like that. Why? So that you can have more time to, for your primary delight, but what happens? We get distracted by other delights. We can enjoy all the beauty and greatness of God's Word that He's put on the planet, and the more we delight ourselves in the Lord, the more we have enjoyment of everything else. It works just the opposite of the way people think in the world. The more they focus on something to delight in, what happens? Mere possessions give no lasting what? Pleasure. What about women? Dear guy, you think, this is the thing, I'm a player, you know, that's why you gotta be a player. Cause the one you're playing with gives no lasting pleasure, you're not doing it according to the Word. So that pleasure's out, so you find someone else to give you some more pleasure, cause the one didn't last. It's off the Word what you're doing, the commitment, first of all, there will be no lasting pleasure without God first. Then if you have a marriage and you have God first, you can have some lasting pleasure. Any other category, cars, there's no lasting pleasure with cars, there's no lasting pleasure with dope. You take it, thank you God, this is good, and then it, it goes from pleasurable sensations to, you're not even, you don't feel good unless you take it, to, you feel horrible unless you take it, to, you feel horrible even when you take it. But you're out of control. It gives no lasting pleasure. Sex doesn't, drugs doesn't, alcohol doesn't, things don't, people don't. The only thing that gives lasting pleasure is the Word. For though thy words were found, what is it, Jeremiah fifteen sixteen, or sixteen fifteen, what is it? I believe it's fifteen sixteen. "Thy words were found, and I did eat them; and the Word was unto me." Yep. "And thy word was unto me." "Thy words were found, and I did eat them," fifteen sixteen. "And thy word was unto me, the joy and rejoicing of mine heart; for I am called by thy name, O Lord, God of hosts." "Thy words were found, and I did eat them; and thy word was unto me, the joy and what? Rejoicing, 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 re- 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 rejoicing again, rejoice again, joy again, rejoicing." Here you end this Psalms 1. This blesses the man, the word blessed here is the word for happy. Happy. "Happy is the man," hey, that's gotta be some lasting pleasure, huh? "That walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly." So those people that look gay, and are walking in the counsel of the ungodly are not really happy. So they're not really gay. Something else, right? "Nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the..." "But his delight is in the law of the Lord; and in his law doth he meditate what? He eats it, he drinks it, he sleeps it, he walks with it." Let's see, what else? Walk with it, every time you take a step, or every time you think about your situation and condition, thank God that you're, that the answer and your release is coming, yeah. Eat it, drink, every time. So when you think about your situation, you put the Word there, and you thank God for what? The answer, deliverance, release. "Ten lepers were healed, one came back to be thankful, one was made whole." See the difference, whole. Thankfulness, look how critical thankfulness is to hold, but here it is. He meditates day and night, throughout the day. So something comes up, you think the Word, and you thank God for your deliverance. Both things have to be there, if you just handle one, then you handle the other. You, you have the Word there, every time you take a step, eat it, drink it, sleep it, walk with it, see? So that Word is constantly there, well, how's it gonna be constantly there? You constantly have it in your mind, you got your little card, and after you do your little card enough days, that Scripture's there, it's there, it's there, repetition, if you do it. Now, you can do that over a period of a lot of days, but what if you did that? Is there any Scripture you couldn't memorize if you worked, if you ate it, drank it, slept it, and walked with it? What is it, eat it, drink it, sleep it, walk with it? Is there any one Scripture you couldn't memorize in one day, if you, throughout the entire day, kept repeating it? No.
It was by the way it comes along.
Exactly. So if we don't have certain Scriptures, it's because we are not eating them, drinking them, sleeping and walking with them. It's as simple as that. Why? Because either we're not clear on the need for the deliverance, or we're not concerned enough to do it. It's what it comes down to. Clarity and concern. Now, if we are clear, then if we're gonna be concerned, and I, I love that Chuck, when you were building the concern, you were talking about it, to build the concern, and to solidify the concern, I understand that concept, I understand that principle
I'm ready now.
Of why, why you do that. I, I understand it from going through it personally, where he just gets the point, I am, um, and I would write it down, I did. These are the reasons I'm concerned. I do not want to hear that again, I do not want to be in that situation where they bring up to me again, blah, blah, blah. I, you know, I, I I, you know, I, I, I'm concerned about this. I do not, there is a place for not, I know Athel's is working that, but I don't, I don't, it's not done yet. There is a place for not, or it wouldn't be in the word. So. Then what does it say in the word? And he shall be like a tree. Planted by the rivers of water that bringeth forth his fruit in his season. Does that sound like release from your prisons? You betcha, sounds like deliverance and release to me. His leaf also shall not wither. And whatsoever he doeth shall. Prosper, whatsoever he doeth shall prosper. Is wither, shall not wither, fade is the word there, so with it. Yep, that's cool, well. Every time you take a step, or every time you think. About your situation or condition, so thinking and action. Anytime you move toward it, what do you do? You thank God that the answer in your release is coming. Every time you think about it, you thank God that the answer in your release is coming. So you got the word there throughout the day, going through your brain, and every time you take an action, you thank God. If it was medication, what would you do? Thank God every time you take that medication, that the answer in your release, your deliverance from the reason of having to take the medication is coming. Every time you have to stretch, or twist, or turn, if something doesn't work the way it should, every time, every time, every time, every time, you thank God. That's what accelerates the process, gang. It can take forty years to get there, or it could take forty days to get there, or it could take forty hours to get there, or it could take forty minutes to get there. One of the reasons that some of these things in your, you know, you set the, the length of time of the exposure. Is because of how many other things you've got going on. One of the thing, one of the reasons it takes time to accomplish things in business and other categories, is because of all the weight you're carrying. And that I carry. It's really a challenge, guys. This is the cha, this is part of the challenge right here. You wanna do X, Y, Z, and so you think, you know, we do this in business, right? We think about. Are you with me over there, need a break?
Yeah, I have to just go to the bathroom, I'll listen, I'll.
Boy, this is something to work, huh, every time you take a step. This is one of these chapters, uh. Like we were talking about the other day, two days ago, I believe it was, about being able to rapid fire this off. This means taking some top, taking some time. Whatever period of time that is, before we get together, after we get together, bathroom time, some time. To write down some of these things that are. Pictures, write them down, get the picture really clear, get some verses wrapped around that, and be able to pop these so that throughout that day. Oh, I know I was talking about the timeframe. Sometimes the timeframe is based on the weight you're carrying, you and I carry. You know, if we wanna stay with the camera analogy, then we talked about the amount of light. But how quickly do we get that light of the word in our minds and into our hearts, see? We can do it over forty years. By getting a little at a time over forty years. Certain things we can do in forty, um, months. Weeks, days. What's what, hours? Forty hours, forty, uh.
Days and forty nine.
Forty minutes. We could take all day to do a verse, to get a verse nailed, we could get it nailed in forty minutes and have it for the rest of our lives. Another way to look at it. If you put all, focus all the attention for, I just use forty, I'm not saying that that's the magic number. But for a short period of time with all the intensity. This is what, um, one of the things Anthony Robbins was known for, and one of the thing, ways, things he described is how to get. Make changes in his life, he called it all out massive action. He would just, you know, if it was gonna be, if it was to be a black belt. Usually it takes black belts a certain period of time because they, they go to class once a week. He started going to class every day, and then two or three times a day or something, he did something, he accelerated the whole program. To do that, of course, you gotta be, you gotta drop something else off. I mean, doing that and working a job at the same time would be a little bit of a challenge, right? Unless your job was giving towels to the other black belts. Maybe then you could be, even then, you're not training, you're working. So, even like we're doing now, the time and intensity of training just in this blue book. To learn these concepts and principles, a person could read the blue book once a year for ten years and start to get it. Even then, it would be a little challenging. Or like this kind of intensity where we are in it, we're nailing it, we're focused on it, we're intensely into it. That time factor, that exposure time factor can be a function of, I don't know that it always is, but it can be a function of. How much intensity you put into getting the word of deliverance into your mind and your heart. And of course, certain things influence us to make that exposure time shorter. If there's something coming up at a certain time, you know, we can get real intense about it. When I was, first time going to the advanced class and had to come up with the money to do that. I was eating, drinking, sleeping, doing this kinda thing, but my time was shorter and shorter and shorter. And so I got very focused and very intense that God was gonna provide, of course he did, he provided a painting job. Like the last few days before it, I remember working almost twenty-four hours a day. Actually, I think I worked, uh, Eric and I, another guy named Eric. And I worked almost thirty-six hours straight to finish this painting job, so we could go, so we could have the money to go to the advanced class. Now we had to already have had our, I think, seems like we already had to have had some money in, I don't remember that. Advanced class seventy-nine, did you have to pay all, all of it in advance, or was it some at the door? You remember, you probably had all yours paid in advance.
Of course.
See?
That's why I got my notes now.
Hey, but I was there too. We were both there, whichever way we did it, but. Seems like, I, I know some of it you had to pay in advance, maybe you had to pay it all in advance, but I needed some other money for something, maybe it was lodging. Maybe it was for transportation, that I had to have a certain amount, I don't. Somehow or other, I had to have it, and I remember working up to the last day. For thirty-six hours, that was like a record, almost thirty-six hours straight to get that job done. Cause I wanted to go, so what do you do then? Well, eating just wasn't as important as the advanced class at that point. I know we got a sandwich or something, but it was like, roll. So Eric, you know, then you go through that thing with the person where. There's some point when you work all night with someone where you just wanna rip their throat out, you know? Have you ever worked all day and all night with somebody? There's some point usually where you're just, there're do, there's some tick that they have that you don't notice until about four AM. And about that time, you're like, if you do that one more time, I'm gonna roll you with this, so you have to renew your mind. And so, just fatigue and. You know, then there's the other point where you're laughing like an idiot, you know, everything's funny. Oh, I just rolled the back, your back with the roller. I just stuck, I just poured a can of paint over your head, you know?
Did he tell you?
Yeah. It was wild. I forget his last name right now, I'll remember it. But. Intensity, that's what we were talking about. So what if today, something had to get done, it had to get done today? Well, what happens? Well, man, you get real serious about it. Boy, imagine if we got real serious about stuff, so that tomorrow we could get real serious about something else. How many more things perhaps we could accomplish? Just as though, interesting, just thinking it through, you know, principles wise, again, concepts, principles. Well, we know this, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You know what they say, when you're about to go on vacation. It's amazing how many things you can get done when you're about to leave for a week or two. That normally would take a week or two to do, and you get them done in one or two days, cause you're leaving. It's the same thing they talk about in baseball, and not baseball, basketball, and football. The last two minutes of the game.
More touchdowns was scored in like two minutes than the previous forty-eight.
Right, well, how can that be? Level of intensity. Finally, then they get, and really, okay, it was only two minutes, the two-minute warning. And now we go, oh my gosh, I got two minutes, you know, we can, we gotta turn this thing around, we gotta do this, do that. Why weren't the first two minutes that intense? Steffi Graf, perhaps greater than any other tennis player I know. Would get on the court ready to play, and she made those first, she bear it usually, she was so far ahead by the first. I don't know, I won't say two minutes, but she put that intensity up front. And basically maintained it. But most of it was up front. And by the time they got to being intense, it was really over. That's a great technique. Cause most pe, I can see why she played, don't you Abby? Cause most people don't put the intensity up front. They wanna get warmed up into the game, while they're warming up, she is kicking their butts. She's warmed up when she steps on the court, and she kicks their butt, by the time they're warm, they're done. They're finally warmed up, and so the first set is six oh, the second set is six three, but it's already over. That woman won more, this was, I don't know if it's still the case today, I can't think anybody else is any faster, so. Pretty much, it has to be the same case today. She won more money per minute than any other player, male or female. Cause she was on the court for such a short period of time. Who were you, you were talking about, who was it, Tyson? That woman was like Tyson in the mind, or maybe Tyson was like her. Probably more the other way around, Tyson was more like her. She'd get on the court, and she was there to finish you, she was there to beat you and to beat you decisively and to beat you quickly. And she just got out there and started swinging that racket and putting you down. Why make, she did, she wasted very few, I used to look at her and go. Why don't other people hit the ball to where the person is not like she does? She would hit the ball not to where you were, but to where you weren't. Other people would run up and hit the ball right back to where the person was. So they don't have to do anything but stand there and hit it back. Where she would, it just made sense that if you're on that side of the court. To make you go to the other side of the court to get the ball, or somewhere else. But others are just hitting it right back to each other, back, if women tend, women's tennis, they would just do that. She would hit it where you weren't, the next person to start to figure that out was Monica Seles. She would run you ragged, just back and forth and back and forth. But Steffi was more than just back and forth, Steffi was with a purpose. Where, make you run up, make you run back, side to side. Even than Monica, Monica was just flat out power and placement in the sense of to make you run. But Steffi made you run so that when she came over here, you wouldn't be in position to get it, it had, it was a different level of thinking. It's really something.
She, she was phenomenal.
She was.
Phenomenal player.
Absolutely. Perhaps. The Sampras was good, but I don't, in my mind, Steffi was greater than Sampras as a player. Now I, Navratilova was ending while I was, when I was getting interested, so she is considered a legend, and is a legend. A tennis legend.
Broke legend.
Broke, Navratilova?
Isn't she trying to come back?
It's because she loves the game.
Yeah, not to come.
And she's not coming back. She's won doubles nonstop, her awards are unprecedented, her winnings.
And she finally won the twentieth, that's what she won, and maybe she's the only one, one, one twenty-one, I don't know. Or maybe she's still working on records, quietly working on more history book things where it'll be, it'll take some phenomenon to ever. Beat that record. But Steffi had some other things that were untouched. Anyway, intensity. So today, what do we do today? Well, we can get in there, we have to take control. Now, you work for the company, I understand that, so. You're not always in complete control between, at a certain project. But. There is so much undirected time during the day, and, and you know, that, that people can take, not just to be so specific, but the people can take during the day that's unstructured, self-structured. Not directed, where a person could figure out what to do, what they can work on. And they finish a project and there's space between that one and the next one, if they don't already have the next one planned, then you lose time, you waste time. Between this one and that. So planning, like we talked about, part of your day needs to be planning of what you have planned to do. It may be personal things that need to get done, it may be business things that are projects that were given to you. Or it may be. Things in your mind that you're working, that you're developing, that you're building, that you've gotta take and put somewhere to get that done. It could even be a screensaver. Could be one of your verses, I don't know how long, you, you may have to only be able to do part one, and then part two, and then part three during the day. On your screensaver, because I don't know how long, how much of a verse you can type in. But so what? What if you had to do? Part one for the first part of the day, part two for the second part of the day, part three for the third part of the day? Well, how would you do it? Well, you'd have to schedule, you'd have to write down that, okay, when I get there, I'm gonna put in. The first half of that, or the first third of that verse in my screensaver. Then around noon, you put in the second, then around wherever, you put in the third part. Or if it's having cards that you're gonna rotate, the same card rotate over and over and over again. Whatever. You can experiment with it until you, to, we, not just you, but we find ways of keeping ourselves. From being distracted from what we want throughout the day, so we don't, a whole day goes by and we haven't.